Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing Countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing Countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing Countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. Want to welcome all of you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning. It is Wednesday, May 16th. If you'll please stand, we'll have our pledge and invocation from our stand-in chaplain today, Commissioner Les Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, it is once again that we thank you for allowing us to see another one of your beautiful days. We ask you to be with us, each and every one of us, when we're on this desk and in the audience as we make decisions to make this great county a greater county. If we have any disagreement, Father, we ask that you be with us to iron out those problems and let us be on one accord. We ask that you protect those in military uniforms on this soil or foreign soil, fighting for our freedoms. Put your loving arms, protection around them. Father, we ask you to be with those first responders that put their lives on the line for us each and every day. We ask you to put your loving arms around them. At the end of their tour or the end of their duty, take them back to their homes and find everything safe and sound. And Father, we ask that when our work is done here today, you take us back to our homes, safe and sound. And one other thing, Father, we ask if it's at your will, help the Tampa Bay Lightning. All these we ask in your heavenly name. Amen.
Great prayer, Commissioner Miller. Thank you very much. Go Bolts! Before we get started, I would like to read a memo into the record. Commissioner Merman, please be advised that due to unavoidable conflict, I'll be late to or absent from today's Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Please read this memo into the record from Commissioner Stacy White. And we do have one presentation today and three proclamations. And the presentation will be the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. It's presented by your Board of Accounting Commissioners, recognizing three high school baseball players for their outstanding athletic and academic achievements. And so we'll get started with that presentation. The agenda item is a very special one for the Board of County Commissioners and the residents of Hillsborough County. It's our pleasure to present the 2018 Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. The Board established this annual award 13 years ago to recognize the exemplary athletic, academic, and community service achievements of a high school baseball player or team here in Hillsborough County. Those who win this award are wonderful examples of drive, determination, and leadership, not just in their sport but throughout their daily lives. Commissioner Hagan, would you like to tell us more about the award and recognize these outstanding individuals?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. This is one presentation I always look forward to every year. The namesake of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award is a National Baseball Hall of Fame member, 12-time All-Star, and a longtime local resident who graduated from Plant High School and has helped coach at Wharton High School. Wade Boggs had an incredible 3,010 hits during his 18-year career in Major League Baseball. He played for the Boston Red Sox and the New York Yankees and finished his career back home within Tampa Bay Devil Rays. The Rays retired his number 12 in 2000, and two years ago, the Red Sox retired his number 26. Wade is involved in many charities and does so much in our community. We are proud to call him one of our own, and we're very pleased to have him with us this morning. Mr. Wade Boggs, welcome. Thank you for being here. Would you please join me at the podium and please say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Good morning. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to the county commissioners for allowing your precious time to recognize these three fine young gentlemen that not only excel on the field but in the classroom and in our community. Congratulations, Parker, Franco, Evan. You are pillars in our community. You really are. It's one thing to be a great athlete and have that prowess, but to exemplify not only 4.5, 5, get into the six-point range of grade point average, it's a wonderful accomplishment. And then to go into community for community service hours and give that time. And also, I'd like to congratulate the families, the moms and dads. You've done an outstanding job. Congratulations. And with that, our community is extremely safe in the future with these fine young men representing Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Well said, Wade. And I'd also like to echo his remarks and thank the parents for all the sacrifices that you made through the years so these young men could play ball and learn some of life's greatest lessons right on the ball field. I'd also like to thank the members of the selection committee. He reviewed the nominations and recommended this year's honorees. The committee members this year are Mr. K.R. Lombardia, who serves as chairman, Eddie Cardieri, Albert Lee, Tampa City Councilman Charlie Miranda, Andy Taylor, Tony Jackson, Andy Scaglione, and Tony Saladino. Would the committee members who are here please rise so we can recognize your contributions? We greatly appreciate your time and service. The young men recommended for the award this year are truly outstanding. In fact, because several nominees achieved at such a high level, the committee continued the tradition of recommending two honorable mentions in addition to the overall winner. Would Franco Alaman and John and Francine Watts, representing their son Evan Watts, and coaches Landy Faiotto and Kevin McCray, and any other family members, please come I'm very proud to recognize these talented young men who shine brightly on the baseball diamond and in their schools and communities. We'll start with Franco Alaman, a senior from Alonzo High School. Franco's story is truly inspiring. When he arrived in the United States from Cuba in 2011, he could not speak English. But Franco is motivated with a strong desire to succeed. He learned English and became an honor roll student with a cumulative grade point average of 5.0. Franco is a dominating pitcher. He had a nine-and-one record this year with an earned run average of .58 and over 100 strikeouts in 72 innings. Opposing teams hit just 147 against him. Franco is considered one of the top high school pitchers in the country and is expected to be chosen in the first three rounds of the Major League Baseball draft. He was awarded a baseball scholarship to Florida International University. He's received numerous other honors, including being named to the Collegiate Baseball Preseason All-American Team, First Team All-State, and All-County. He also participated in the East Coast Professional Showcase, which features the top high school baseball players in the country, as well as the area code games and the Diamond Club Classic. Further, Franco is a leader, serving as Alonzo's team captain. He is always willing to help his teammates achieve their greatest potential. He's unselfish and wants his teammates and team to succeed. It is very common to see Franco helping younger pitchers in the bullpen and stressing the importance of working hard and having a purpose in life. And now I'd like to recognize Evan Watts, a senior at Robinson High School. Evan had an exam this morning, so his parents are here on his behalf. Evan is a great example of what high school athletics is all about. His dedication and work ethic resulted in him becoming Robinson's starting catcher, one of the toughest positions in all of baseball. He's a solid contributor, batting .246 this year with a fielding percentage of .955. And he's a leader not only on his team but on campus and in his community. He's a graduate of the Positive Coaching Alliance Leadership Program and a recipient of the Positive Coaching Alliance Triple Impact Competitor Scholarship. Evan excels in the demanding international baccalaureate program. He's maintained a 3.9 unweighted grade point average and a 6.79 weighted GPA and is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and History Honor Society. Evan has demonstrated his love of the community and others through more than 600 community service hours and other work. His efforts include serving as a senior camp counselor for underprivileged youth the past three years, as a Robinson High School IB ambassador, and on the Young Men's Service League, for which he's the current leadership chairman. Through the Young Men's Service League, Evan has volunteered at numerous nonprofit groups in the Tampa Bay area. He plans to attend the University of Florida and pursue a career goal of becoming an orthopedic physician. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Wade Boggs will present each of you with a Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award honorable mention in recognition of your academic, athletic, and community service achievements. He also has a signed baseball for each of you. Congratulations for everything you guys have achieved. I'd like to invite each of you to come up and say a few words. We'll start with Franco and Coach Faiotto, and then Evan's parents and Coach McCray.
Thank you so much with honoring Franco with this, to be here today. It's been a pleasure to coach Franco, to see him grow as a man, a fierce competitor but a caring person, as you can see the way he is with his brother today who's still in the show. But thank you so much. Franco, I wish you the best. Wade, you know, thank you. Best of luck, and it's an honor to be here.
It's an honor to be here today and receive this award. It's great, a little more. It's great to be here today and receive this award. Four years of high school, been working very hard in school and on the field. It's great to be here and receive this award.
As Mr. Hagan said, Evan's disappointed he couldn't be here today. He's in the third week of finishing up his IB exams, and unfortunately, they couldn't be rescheduled. But he did prepare a statement, which I'll read. First of all, I want to apologize for not being able to attend today. I'm deeply honored to have been named one of the honorable mention winners of this award. Thank you, Wade Boggs and the Hillsborough County Commissioners, for their continued support of athletics in the county. He'd also like to thank his parents and all the support, as well as his coaches and teammates, for helping make him a better player and a better teammate and a better person.
Thank you again, and congratulations to Franco and Evan for a great job. Look forward to seeing all of their accomplishments in the future. Can we come back and we'll take a photo?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Congratulations again. And now would Parker Messick and his family and Coach Mike Faire please come forward? Parker Messick attends Plant City High School, and he is an all-star on many levels. On the baseball field, he excels at two positions, pitcher and first baseman. He recently ended the season with a .298 batting average with 17 hits, including three doubles, and led the team with four home runs. He had 17 RBIs and struck out just eight times. On the mound, Parker had a record of six and three with a 1.5A ERA and 45 strikeouts in 44 and 1/3 innings. Parker's tremendous season resulted in him being named the 2018 Hillsborough County All-Western Conference Baseball Team Federal Division twice. He was awarded a medal as a first-team pitcher and was also selected to the second team as a first baseman. Parker has been named to three Perfect Game All-Tournament Teams while playing with the Florida Burns Top 2019 Platinum Team. He's ranked in the top 500 nationally and is currently ranked 112th in Florida in the class of 2019. As a team captain, Parker goes out of his way to offer encouraging words to teammates who are frustrated or disappointed in their performance and shows them ways to maximize their talents. In the classroom, Parker is an advanced placement and honor student who has been duly enrolled at Hillsborough Community College since his freshman year. He has a 5.42 cumulative GPA and a 3.48 unweighted GPA. A member of the National Society of High School Scholars, the National Honor Society at Plant City High School, and a recipient of the President's Education Award, Parker scored 1,300 on the SAT on his first try. He is in the top 2% of his class and has accepted a scholarship to Florida State University, where he plans to study biological sciences, go into pre-med, and play baseball. In the community, Parker's leadership is making a difference in many lives. He's volunteered well over 100 hours for organizations such as Toys for Tots, Team Santa, the Florida Baptist Children's Home, and Volunteer Umpire. He's hosted clinics for players and coaches at Plant City Little League and is a member of the Bronze Fundraising Club Relay for Life Team Tomorrow. Because of his outstanding performance on the field, his academic excellence, and his tremendous leadership at school and in the community, Parker Messick is the 2018 recipient of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. And did I mention that he's only a junior? On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Wade Boggs will present you with your trophy and as well as a signed baseball. Now would you like to come up and say a few words?
It's such an honor receiving this award this morning. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for taking the time to present us with these awards, and of course, Mr. Boggs, for making this all possible. Your legacy in this town has left its mark, and the fact that you continue to mentor young baseball players is amazing. I'd also like to congratulate Franco and Evan. You know, I'm truly honored to be standing up here with two of the best baseball players in the county, and I wish you much success in the draft and in future endeavors. I would also like to thank my family, my mom and dad, and my sister. You know, without your mom, you're every day washing clothes before games and practices and dad out there, you know, throwing BP before Little League games and catching bullpens in the backyard. It's awesome. It's truly appreciated. And Reagan, always taking pictures every game. I can't thank you enough for that. And Coach Mike is with me every day on the field. He sees me almost more than my parents do. He's taught me a lot of how to be a better man and how to be a better player, and I can't thank you enough for that. And also to my grandparents and my uncle, I can't thank you enough for being there every game, full sport. I have my own student section at basically every game. And also, I have to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Without Him, none of this would be possible.
I never thought I'd be up here in front of Tony Saladino. He coached me when I was still the same size, but... I actually have two signed Wade Boggs baseballs. I'd like the third one tonight if I can. But I just want to say Parker is one of those young athletes. I know Coach Faiotto and Coach McCray, we pray for those guys to be in our program. And he's one of those type of athletes that come in our program, and it's a pleasure to be around. He's not missed one day of practice in three years, just put it that way. A 5.7 GPA and going on and on and on about his accomplishments, but I'm more proud about how he is as a team member and enjoying life on a daily basis. There's not a day that goes by that I don't see that smiling face. And Parker, congratulations. And Wade Boggs, thank you. Tony Saladino, the selection committee, and the Board of Commissioners, thank you again, and it's an honor. Thank you, guys.
Before we take picture, we have a Commissioner comment. Commissioner Higginbotham?
Parker, I'm proud of you and your family. It's always nice to see Plant City. And I know you'll probably have a better drive going back than you did coming over. It was a little wet on the roads, but it's so obvious that family and faith do play an important role, and that's something that I'll always cherish, being a fifth-generation Plant Cityian, that I know holds true and runs deep in our roots. And proud of you, mom and dad and sis and coach.
We're going to have one group shot for everyone that was recognized this morning. You guys want to come on up?
And the mom and dad can come up and represent. Sure.
And the committee can come up also.
Sure. Committee?
Charlie, come on, you're not shy.
And if I might just say thanks to Tony Jackson, who's here this morning, for your work on the committee, and Andy Taylor as well.
And in closing, I do want to thank Commissioner Hagan and Wade Boggs. Thank you again for helping us honor these outstanding student athletes. It's remarkable to hear the accomplishments of these such young students. I applaud the three honorees. Each of them have contributed so much, not just as a baseball player but to their team, their schools, their community. And more great accomplishments, I'm sure, are sure to come as they grow their athletic leadership skills through college and beyond. Congratulations and best of luck and continued success to all of you, and maybe we'll see you at the new stadium for the Rays one day. We hope. So, thank you all. And we will now, of course, move into the three proclamations we have. Well, good morning, and I hope we have a big audience watching and listening because this is important today. It is, here we go, hurricane season. We have to get ready. The storm that was churning, boy, was that just like you wake up one day and said, hurricane season is finally here? And we do. We have a lot to prepare for. As you know, last year, you know, we escaped really a major hit, though we did suffer some damage and devastation in some areas. It's amazing that 15 minutes, how a storm can change course so fast. And really, you know, we became on the west side of the storm, which is the good side to be on. So, it was lucky for us, not so lucky for other people, but I think we're... We just have to prepare. We got to plan. We have to stay informed, know your zone, get an insurance checkup. That is very, very important. But we need to prepare for these emergencies. We need to have a ready kit of emergency supplies, water, non-perishable food items, flashlights, prescription medications for you and for your family. Plan, make an emergency plan. And I often tell people, you know, they wait till the last minute, that is too late. You need to have a communications plan available. Where are you going to be? Where are your relatives? Where's your family going to be? Where's your pet going to be? You know, and these are all important things to know and have those key contacts in a safe place for everyone. Having a safe location to go to for relevant emergencies and the family household meeting place after an emergency to decide how you cope with any damage that may have happened from a storm. Stay informed. Get a NOAA weather radio, signing up for Hillsborough County HCFL alerts through the county website, and staying connected to local media outlets. The weather radios, we do have, I think, available through our emergency department. Yes, we do, Emergency Operations Center. So, you can also go online, just stay connected, stay informed. Know your zone, know what zone you're in. They do change from year to year, and this is important to know. And where the flood zones are, because you don't want to go near those areas. They're different. Both can be found going on the county website. Type in your address, and you'll know exactly where you're... what zone you're in. Have an insurance checkup if disaster strikes, so get the insurance checkup. Will you be covered? Go to the Federal Alliance of Safe Homes website at www-flash.org for more information about insurance for natural disasters. This is all critical information that you need to have. Stay connected to the county Stay Safe webpage. Learn how you can be better prepared for a disaster. Register for emergency alerts. Even in severe thunderstorms throughout the year, you will get alerts if you sign up Evacuation zones did change last year. Approximately 157,000 Hillsborough County residents were impacted by this change. Do you know your zone? Log on to the county hurricane evacuation tool to identify your zone, www.hcflgov.net/emergency. Lives are at stake, be prepared. And so, I'm going to ask Mike Ryan to come forward. He's the deputy emergency manager. I'd like to present this proclamation to him, as we do every year, to really denote hurricane preparedness week. And it says, "Whereas Hillsborough County's ample sunshine and warm climate draw people from all over the world, whereas tropical storms occur frequently in the Tampa Bay region, catastrophic hurricanes are a serious threat, and residents must be prepared to protect themselves and their loved ones, pets, and property in the event of severe weather. Whereas the area's vulnerability to cyclones..." Excuse me, allergies was illustrated in 2017 when Hurricane Irma struck, just a year after brushes with tropical storm Colin, Hurricane Hermine.
As you pointed out, the system in the Gulf this week really identified two things to me. There's one, that systems generally do not follow the skinny black line that we always watch on the hurricane tracking map, and they don't pay attention to the calendar either. So, it's one of those things where we constantly need to be prepared. And in order to be prepared, we ought to be prepared as a community. But in order to do that, it takes individual actions. And as Commissioner Murman pointed out, there are several things that we can do as individuals to help us become better prepared at the individual level, which in essence helps us to become better prepared on the community level. Adversity is going to strike. There's not many things that we can do, if anything, to prevent storms from coming up and impacting the area. However, what we can do as a community is to reduce the impact that storms can have on our community. So, that's one of the key points behind getting prepared and staying prepared and being alert and being aware of what's going on around you. So, again, thank you for this proclamation, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak to you and help spread the preparedness effort, to help us become better prepared as a community, so that at the end, when the storm passes by and we're all recovering, that we come out as survivors and not necessarily victims of the impact of a storm. Thank you.[678.68][678.68](pause)
Now, Commissioner Les Miller will present our next proclamation.
Good morning. I'd like to ask Mr. Elizabeth Good to come forward, please. She's the co-founder and board chair of the Seventh Mom Project Incorporated. because it was full, but the importance of it never fades because of that. And this is to recognize prenatal mental health awareness week. And it's vitally important. And as I read more and more about it, it's something that occurs that many people don't even realize it's occurring with them or a family member, but it's vitally important to realize this. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are a spectrum of mental health issues that manifest during pregnancy or after birth. And whereas prenatal mental health is an important issue to mothers, fathers, families, infants, and healthcare providers. And whereas many people are not screened or treated for, nor sufficiently informed about prenatal mood and anxiety disorders because they may lack comprehensive healthcare and understanding of the disorder or knowledge of where to go for help and care. Whereas families of all races, income levels, ages, and backgrounds are profoundly impacted, contributing to a development in behavioral issues and attachment disorders in young children. And whereas prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are treatable with timely therapy, therapeutic interventions, community-based support services, and medication. And whereas residents, communities, and service providers must have a greater understanding of prenatal mood and anxiety disorders in order to provide timely diagnosis, treatment, and appropriate support to community services and referral systems that coexist to facilitate recovery. And whereas increased education and heightened awareness about prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are vital for all residents of Hillsborough County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County is hereby declaring, this is a little late, April 30th to May 6th, 2018, as prenatal mental health awareness week in Hillsborough County, and urges all citizens to familiarize themselves with awareness signs of prenatal mood and anxiety disorders, and for women and men to make sure they have been properly screened for symptoms and receive appropriate treatment if needed, executed the 16th of May, 2018, and signed by the seven members of the county commission." Elizabeth Good, thank you very much for what you did. Can I say a few words?
Sure.
I hold this.
Okay. We just want to thank the county commissioners for making this proclamation for the third time. I actually, my co-founder, was able to make it today, so Rebecca, can you just stand up? The two of us have been working really hard in Hillsborough County to make maternal mental health and perinatal mental health at the forefront, because it affects... it is the most common complication of childbirth. It affects way more women than preeclampsia or gestational diabetes. So, we want to help families find the help they need when they are going through that experience. And this is Hattie, and she has no words to say.[932.02][932.02](laughter)
Thank you. And Commissioner Chris will present our next proclamation.
Good morning. I'd like to ask Mr. Elizabeth Good to come forward, please. She's the co-founder and board chair of the Seventh Mom Project Incorporated. This proclamation is a little late, because we couldn't get it on the agenda in the past because it was full, but the importance of it never fades because of that. And this is to recognize prenatal mental health awareness week. And it's vitally important. And as I read more and more about it, it's something that occurs that many people don't even realize it's occurring with them or a family member, but it's vitally important to realize this. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are a spectrum of mental health issues that manifest during pregnancy or after birth. And whereas prenatal mental health is an important issue to mothers, fathers, families, infants, and healthcare providers. And whereas many people are not screened or treated for, nor sufficiently informed about prenatal mood and anxiety disorders because they may lack comprehensive healthcare and understanding of the disorder or knowledge of where to go for help and care. Whereas families of all races, income levels, ages, and backgrounds are profoundly impacted, contributing to a development in behavioral issues and attachment disorders in young children. And whereas prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are treatable with timely therapy, therapeutic interventions, community-based support services, and medication. And whereas residents, communities, and service providers must have a greater understanding of prenatal mood and anxiety disorders in order to provide timely diagnosis, treatment, and appropriate support to community services and referral systems that coexist to facilitate recovery. And whereas increased education and heightened awareness about prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are vital for all residents of Hillsborough County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County is hereby declaring, this is a little late, April 30th to May 6th, 2018, as prenatal mental health awareness week in Hillsborough County, and urges all citizens to familiarize themselves with awareness signs of prenatal mood and anxiety disorders, and for women and men to make sure they have been properly screened for symptoms and receive appropriate treatment if needed, executed the 16th of May, 2018, and signed by the seven members of the county commission." Elizabeth Good, thank you very much for what you did. Can I say a few words? I hold this.
We just want to thank the county commissioners for making this proclamation for the third time. I actually, my co-founder, was able to make it today, so Rebecca, can you just stand up? The two of us have been working really hard in Hillsborough County to make maternal mental health and perinatal mental health at the forefront, because it affects... it is the most common complication of childbirth. It affects way more women than preeclampsia or gestational diabetes. So, we want to help families find the help they need when they are going through that experience. And this is Hattie, and she has no words to say.[1111.83][1111.83](laughter)
Thank you. And Commissioner Chris will present our next proclamation.
This next proclamation is to an organization and a profession that I've had a chance to work with in several different capacities, public and private, over several decades. And I'm... in personal business, I've found it very useful in order to make sure that we were doing the right things the right ways and heading in the right directions. In the nonprofit sector, it was a way to make sure we were doing the right things and moving in the right directions, and to assure our donors that things were above board and being handled the right way. And in the public sector, all the above and even more. We're very lucky here in Hillsborough County to have an incredible team of internal auditors that we work with very closely. And I understand that other counties and throughout the state, others enjoy the same. And today, we're here to recognize that profession and, most of all, the people who serve. I have a proclamation. I'm gonna go ahead and read it. "Whereas internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and counseling activity designed to add value to an organization's operations and improve them. Whereas internal auditing seeks to help an organization accomplish its objectives by bringing a systematic, disciplined approach..." At least, we like to hope so. "...to evaluate and improve risk management, controls, and governance of the process. Whereas in both the public and private sectors, internal auditing is a vital part of strengthening an organization and protecting its stakeholders. Whereas an incredibly sophisticated and complex activity of internal auditing requires sophisticated knowledge, training, education, and even, in some cases, creativity. Whereas..." That wasn't on the proclamation, but I know. "...whereas the positive contributions of internal auditing professionals to the success of the organizations and the global economy at large deserves to be recognized and commended for the services that they provide. Whereas every year, May is designated Internal Auditor Audit Awareness Month. We're coming. Month to promote awareness of internal auditing and the profession and the services that they perform. Whereas the internal auditing auditors..." "Florida West Coast Chapter has had 53 years of uninterrupted service and contributions to the internal auditing profession in Tampa Bay. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare May as 2018 Internal Audit Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and congratulates the Florida West Coast Chapter of the Institute of Internal Auditors for your 53 years of successful auditing for the value of internal auditing professionals in Hillsborough County and Tampa Bay. Please join me up here, those that are here for this today. Peggy, you and your team. I've got a list of names here. I see there's more than what's on my list, but I'm gonna say them. Mark Smith, he's the chapter president. Monica Sanchez, chapter vice president. Christina Simmons, chapter secretary. Paul Jerome, chapter treasurer. Heidi Penner, chapter governor and county audit director. Susan Glickman. Now, I know a Susan Glickman. Who's Susan Glickman? There are two of you. The other one's an environmental lobbyist that lives over on the beach. And I'm thinking, Susan? An auditor?[1367.41][1367.41](laughter) Susan Glickman, chapter governor, and Peggy Caskey, our auditor here in Hillsborough County. Please, come on up. Who's gonna be the one receiving this?
I will receive the proclamation.
All right. On behalf of the county, we are very grateful to the services that you and your organization and all of your professionals provide to us, and we wish you well for the ensuing year and look forward to doing this again next year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Greatly appreciated.
Good morning. My name is Monica Sanchez. I'm the vice president of the West Coast Chapter of the Institute of Internal Auditors. I'm here representing Mark Smith, who unfortunately could not attend today. I just want to express, on behalf of my chapter, the deep appreciation to the Board of County Commissioners for presenting this proclamation today. It's simply a great endorsement for what we do every day, like he said, trying to do the right thing continually. And it really motivates us to continue carrying out our mission. Government or public sector represents about 30% of our membership, and like Commissioner Chris mentioned, we have the luxury of having the finest team representing government, both the teams of Hillsborough County and the Hillsborough County Clerk of Circuit Court. They have members that participate in different committees of the chapter and just contribute all the time to improving the program and what we do. Thank you very much, and we are hoping to be here next year.
Anything else?[1461.12][1461.12](applause)
And we are now ready to go into the agenda. Mr. Merrill, would you like to go over the changes to the agenda?
Yes, Commissioners, we have one item added pursuant to Rule 13, which is Commissioner Chris's item, to direct staff to bring to the board within 30 days a proposal to create the Black Heritage and Cultural Council Initiative of Hillsborough County. We have one item that's not on your addendum that we'd like to defer. That's Item A38. That was an administrative agreement to fund the mitigation reconstruction of a severe repetitive loss structure. We need more time to work with the homeowner on that issue, so that'll be deferred to a later date to be determined. No other items have been removed from consent. We have a couple of time certans, beginning with our first... with our public hearing at 10:00 AM, D1, which is to approve Final Assessment Resolution Assessment Rule to create Water and Wastewater Impact v. Assessment Unit 18201. And the only other time certain we have is 10:15, which is F2, which is Commissioner Miller's item, to direct staff to bring to the board in 30 days recommendations for the establishment of an African-American art museum. Those are the changes.
Okay. Much by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve the changes. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. We'll now go into public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone, and three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. We only have one speaker for on the agenda. There was somebody that signed up for on the agenda, but is actually an off the agenda. That is Stephen Kaufman, so he'll move down to the next group of off-agenda speakers. Gerald White is here to speak on the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gerald White, Hillsborough County community activist. First up, I didn't get a chance to sign in F3. This is important to me. So, I'd like the record to reflect that I have an interest in F3. I support F3, and I'd like for the minutes in the record to note that, and the administrator documents that go out. That's a very good...
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chris. But I'm here for Les Miller to issue the African-American museum. We had an African-American museum before. It was great. I have... I was looking at the picture from the opening of the African-American museum. That's me and my wife there. Over 500 folks attended the opening of that museum back in the day. I support it, strongly support it. It's gotta be downtown. We can't not make the mistakes that we made in the past that caused us to lose that museum. It was great for the community. It was great for the kids. We took hundreds of kids to that museum, and it was a win for the community. So, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right and have government support, government inclusion, the cities and the county. And Commissioner Miller, thank you for bringing this forward. I strongly support, and it needs to be done. Also, while I'm here, I did watch the tape of the small discussion on expanding the Board of Commissioners. It's not enough Democrats to be against change. All right? Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Miller. Miller, I know you strongly support having Hispanics representation on this board. And so, I'm just asking you guys to open your hearts, open your minds, and not just say no to a proposal. Let's work to be inclusive and expand the Board. Some of the things that... Some of the things that this mission, I know you support, Commissioner. So let's figure out a way to bring everybody together and do what is right by this community. One point, what, 4 million folks in this community will just boom it? And so it's impossible. African-Americans have never been elected countywide. I ran countywide back in the day. I won the primary, but came 500 votes short in the runoff. They just gang up on you. It's tough to win. You can't win it. I don't believe in African-American. It's very difficult for an African-American to win a countywide rate, and it's too expensive. It's time for local representation, bring these seats down, bring the representation per Commissioner down, expand the Board. And I do support an elected county mayor by way of a chairman, not the mayor post. And so I would support a proposal for an elected chair, eight single-member seats and one countywide seat, elected county chairman with limited powers. And you got to let the administrator be involved in this process. It's not enough. The reason we haven't had success because we have not allowed the county administrator to participate in developing a proposal. Who's a professional who have the backing and the knowledge of the county?
Thank you.
The National County Administration Association.
Thank you. You have a lot to say.
Get the administrator involved, and I think you'll have success.
We got that. Great. Thank you so much.
Don't even think about it.
Okay, we will now move to off-the-agenda speakers. And the first speaker is Stephen Kaufman. Good morning.
Pressed down to go up. That's a hard one for me. Good morning. I'm back again. I'm pleased to be here. Thank you for listening to me again. I'm here, of course, on behalf of HOPE and about the affordable housing issue. Let me just remind you who we are. We are black and white and Hispanic. We are Democrats and Republicans. We are people of faith, and we are here not for ourselves, but for those we are most concerned are easily forgotten. I wanted to say that because it's our belief, our belief continues that the housing stories we've heard compel us to be here and continue to ask you to consider funding for affordable housing. We continue to be feeling strongly about what we called a trust fund. 700 cities have done that and done that successfully. We want you to be aware of that and hopefully open your hearts to what might be possible with such a model. I want to, I want to say this as well. We are people who are concerned, as you are, for the betterment of this community. I think the suggestion that any of us have or would want to ambush you, any member of this commission, is very unfortunate, and I can tell you is personally hurtful. We have gotten into discussions that have been heated at times, but I will tell you this. You as Commissioners can establish a fund, whether it be a trust fund or not, that is both locally controlled and dedicated to committing funds for housing. You as Commissioners can establish that fund and define not only where the money comes from, but control the money, the source itself. I hope you understand that HOPE is not interested in managing this fund. They are not interested in profiting from this, other than sharing with you a community that is better because of the housing we have. And so a county ordinance that could give flexibility to our local needs by defining eligibility requirements, funded activities, and distribution of funds is well within the parameters what you can do. By the way, I've also heard from some of you that this is not the work of county government. I think that's an unfortunate assumption. I think that all politics are local, and I believe strongly that you have a role to play in solving this problem. Please, we understand the problem with the homestead extension. We understand that that is going to be a crunch on the budget. We are asking you to consider your priorities and find a way to yes. I have a packet of material I brought with me to remind you of our vision, and I want to share that with you, and hopefully you'll have a time to look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tamara Berry.
Good morning. Good morning. Tamara Berry, 4704 Lakewood Drive, Sefner, Florida. I've come here today to speak about the new contract being offered by PRC. The old contract with HSTB did not allow payment for strays who were killed. Many of you already know this clause was ignored by both HSTB and PRC. As a matter of fact, HSTB stated clearly, they did and would bill for all strays they took, no matter what the contract said. Commissioners, I would hope that our county would not again put 600,000 of our tax dollars into another contract with a contractor who has clearly stated they will bill for what they feel they are entitled to, whether it is within the terms of the contract or not. That is fraud. As a result, the county is now having to recover the fraudulently paid monies. And now the new contract that is out for offers right now has changed the terms of the contract and does allow taxpayer dollars to be paid to a contractor to kill our strays. Further, every animal taken by the contractor is counted as a live outcome for PRC. But animals who never left their county-approved stray hold facility alive are not a live release. To be blunt, the 90% live release rate is a lie. There are other issues. For example, the county has paid HSTB multiple times for the same animal. The county has paid HSTB for animals who ended up back at PRC as strays. The county has paid HSTB for animals they were going to kill but were picked up and moved to PRC by the finders to save their lives. I personally covered a $125 HSTB adoption fee for a finder to go adopt back the stray dog she had brought to HSTB because she had thought they were no kill, but they were going to kill him. This dog had originally been adopted out by PRC to an irresponsible adopter. And yes, the county paid HSTB to take that dog. There is a dog at PRC right now who had been taken to HSTB as a stray, but they were going to kill him. So after three days, his former owner, who had no place to live, reclaimed him and took him to PRC. He's been up for adoption at PRC for 90 days now, and HSTB got paid $95 for him. What did our tax dollars buy? Commissioners, we as taxpayers do not want our taxes to be used to pay a private contractor to kill our animals, especially when the contractor doesn't even take ownership of the ones they are paid for. We need to use that $600,000 to fix this problem, not to pay for a fake live release rate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicholas Plummer is our next speaker, followed by Dave McAllister.
My name is Nick Plummer. I appeared for the Board, and I want to first thank all of you for the services you've given the county. If you go back and check records, you know I've been here before. I'm here for safety reasons. I'm going to read something, so I'll give you my name in just a minute. Under Florida statute of 119071, I would be exempt for giving my name, but in this case, I'm waiving that exemption. My name is Nick Plummer. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a whistleblower. I served my country six and a half years in the military. I was raised by a mother and father to respect the law and authority. My father was a police officer, and I have many relatives in law enforcement to this day. I had an uncle who was murdered as a police officer during a burglary call. He was murdered, shot. A sad day for the entire family. I served my community, and I served my country. As an auxiliary deputy, in those positions, I've learned the importance of being truthful, accurate in all reports. Never lie, falsify in any way, conceal facts, or spoil any records. Records, notes, reports can all be used as evidence in the court proceedings. You should always follow the chain of command and never, ever be involved in any illegal activity where you'll be held to a higher standard. I also have confidential informants as a reserve deputy. They are very necessary for our law enforcement. I would never betray that trust for their own safety. I have been a good citizen my entire life, no tickets, no accidents, serving my country and my community. I did spend a little time in jail, though, as an auxiliary deputy, working there on weekends. I went into the security business and held all the appropriate license to become an armed guard for the state of Florida. I was employed by one of the largest security companies in the world, G4S Solutions, where I worked some high-profile jobs. What I experienced in that time was absolutely shocking. It is said, "What you don't know won't hurt you." I say, "What you don't know can get you killed," or maimed for life. I was required by Florida laws under Chapter 493 to report unethical and/or illegal activities that violate the laws and put the public at great risk. I was also at the time a volunteer with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department as a city patrol volunteer. I would never recommend anyone to be a volunteer for the Sheriff's Department. You are not appreciated, as I have learned. I'm so disgusted by the way I was treated as a whistleblower by the very people we are supposed to trust. I was investigated, slandered, and threatened, and told to basically go away.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll be back. Three minutes at a time is killing me, but I've got plenty more to say.
Thank you. Dave McAllister, and then Beth Veeneman. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David McAllister. As you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for local history and veterans, especially of the period of the war between the states. Since we met last, we've had Cinco de Mayo and the Kentucky Derby, both, you know, cultural icons. I'm always happy to hear my old Kentucky home rendered there at the Kentucky Derby. And I would note that it's ironic because just recently, a monument, a statue of Stephen Foster was removed in Pittsburgh in another example of cultural erasism. The Augusta Wilson Chapters met with Benjamin Camp, and I've been to Lakeland and St. Cloud to speak on cultural erasism, and we all know Hillsborough's part in that. And I've been down to Fort Myers, too, in Lee County. There, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored Peoples President is crying wolf again with a false flag complaint yet again against commemorations of the county's namesake, Robert E. Lee. Apparently, he seems to feel that the advancement of colored people must be done at the expense of all other people. That's not valid at all. This person just agitates for the sake of agitation and keeps announcing protests and demands and then not showing up. That's what I call crying wolf. And by the way, when I was down there in Lee County, I noticed they have a life-size portrait of General Lee in the county commission chambers, and here we only have a very small picture of our namesake, Will's Hill, out by the security scanner. And I don't think that the Board members have to go through the security, so you probably never see him. Maybe we need to have an appreciation of our namesake and our Anglo-Celtic heritage, and let's have a Will's Hill Appreciation Day or proclamation. I note that we're talking about culture here in item F2 and F3, and you want to start in on a new Black Heritage and Cultural Council and museum. I think I remember that Victor Chris had proposed something similar not very long ago, actually, and I'm all for this. I'm all for building up and appreciating everyone's history, rather than removing and taking down and erasing history. Let me make that clear. I would like to see that not only would be the government involved, but all the persons that were involved in private donations for the erasure of culture here in Hillsborough County, meaning the monument that's been moved, would also donate an equal amount to help promote culture and history in Hillsborough County. And please, run this whole idea by the Diversity Advisory Council. You set this up to advise you.
Thank you.
Please ask them. Thank you.
Beth Veeneman, and then Phil Walters.
Good morning.
My name is Beth Veeneman, and I am a member of the HOPE group. We want to respond to some of the comments made at your last meeting. First, about how a trust fund works. The county would commit public dollars to a fund annually. Once the fund exists, that fund would attract developers. The county would grant seed money, and developers and other financing partners would then develop a full construction plan outside of the trust fund. The trust fund is what gets the process going and makes it possible for homes to be offered at affordable rates. So it's important to understand that the county, public funds would go into the fund, and this publicly sourced fund would then incentivize developers to partner with others to build affordable housing. Another issue, HOPE is not a direct service organization. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots organization of 25 congregations. We have only two full-time staff. The rest of us are volunteers. We listen to our members and neighbors, we identify problems facing families, and we offer research solutions to officials like you to achieve necessary long-term change. We proposed an affordable housing trust fund because that is what has worked in many other municipalities. But to be clear, HOPE would have nothing to do with the creation, management, or administration of that trust fund. HOPE would not present a business plan or identify developers, financiers, or other partners in the use of a trust fund. That is not what we do. We offer solutions. Speaking of solutions, it is past time for this county and this commissioners, Board of Commissioners, to significantly contribute to a solution to our affordable housing crisis. This cannot be solved by depending on budget surpluses. We need dedicated renewable funds to solve this problem. Where there is a will, there is a way. Commissioner Chris suggested using future revenue from increased property values of multifamily developments. In addition, you could follow Ahab's recommendation, increase the ad valorem tax by one quarter of 1%. This very modest tax increase would only be $36 a year for people with homes over $200,000. The probable passage of the homestead exemption increase is actually, has a silver lining. This is the perfect time to increase the ad valorem tax. While people are receiving a reduction of tax of $269 a year because of the homestead exemption, this increase in $36 would still net a decrease in tax of $233 a year. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil Walters, and then Geraldine Rogers Tunes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Two topics I'm going to mention today. First thing is this five-day waiting period you all passed. Did you all consult the people, you know, those that you govern? This is, I believe, very ill-conceived. I mean, I'm a lifelong resident of this county. I'm a responsible citizen. A firearm is a tool. I use this tool every day in my work. Most of the citizens, you know, should have access. Did you all find any research to back this five-day? You all, you say you're out to protect folks, but is there any facts or research pointing to this? Is there? I mean, again, you're passing a restriction. I think it's very well ill-conceived what you all did, because when you need a firearm, you need it. Many of y'all up here have been threatened before, but of course, y'all are, I guess, privileged, because if you're threatened, you have the full strength of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office behind you. Most of the citizens of this county don't have such a luxury if they feel threatened. And there's threats out there. We have gangs, we have criminals. When you feel threatened, you want to be able to protect yourself. And we have this little thing in the U.S. Constitution called shall not be infringed, and y'all have infringed. And along with not very well thought out, of course, the surrounding counties don't have a three-day waiting period, so if somebody's in dire need, they're probably just going to run across county lines, we're going to be losing tax sales revenues. But bottom line is, not very well thought out, folks. I think you need to reconsider this. The next thing, if you'd put that up there, this is something y'all brought up a while back, Commissioner Merman, on airboats. I'm a longtime airboater. I've been running my airboat out in Tampa Bay for about 30 years. I don't think y'all have heard any complaints about myself and many of my associates who've been running out there. I think there's ways to solve this issue. I haven't heard anything lately. I've spoken with some of the homeowners. You can do it without being discriminatory against the type of vessel. It comes back to the firearm issue. It's a behavioral issue. Don't blame the inanimate object. You have fools, you have idiots out here in public, you have criminals, and they're the ones causing us the problem. But I'm going to bring you, Commissioner Merman, I'll drop off at your office, this Florida Code of Ethics for the airboaters. These, you can put at some of the boat landings where there's issues. There's also a brochure that FWC wrote up about 10 years ago, which I assisted in writing about the Code of Ethics. There's a sticker back here, where you actually can put it on the back of the boats. Don't do anything airboat-specific, because again, it's Don't do anything airboat-specific, because again, it affects all of us that operate. And the issue is, let's use the books, the laws on the book to solve the problem against the individual lawbreaker, not discriminate with a wide brush against everybody that participates in a certain activity. So thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate you coming today and giving those comments. You know it's one bad actor, and we're trying to work with that individual right now to get things calmed down.
Well, if you'd like to get out on an airboat, I'll be happy to take you out in the north end of the bay. I've been meaning to see exactly what the real issue is. And I think the sheriff needs to be spurred to act, because the homeowner said they had videotaped with this guy, I believe, was doing illegal activities. And the sheriff said, "Well, you know, we can't prosecute on tapes." Well, we had a shark fishing incident that was prosecuted. We had a matinee issue on tape. So I think we need to get the appropriate people to enforce the laws on the book, and we can solve this. Because as you well know, it is one individual doing things that he should not be doing.
That's correct, and we are working on it.
But I'll be happy to take you out.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Geraldine Rogers Toomes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to express one of HOPE's concerns. Every family deserves a decent and affordable place to call home. Though we appreciate the report last month showing that $62 million has been used on affordable housing in our county in the last five years, which were funds from federal and state sources, are subject to federal and state guidelines and restrictions. There has been no significant local investment to address our county's serious affordable housing needs. Importantly, there are still more than 200,000 households spending 30% or more of their income on housing in Hillsborough County, and more than 100,000 spending 50% or more. And over 10,000 families are still on an affordable housing waiting list. With the Section 8 list so long, it has been closed for the past eight years. These numbers tell us that whatever was spent on needed housing is not enough. It is important for our county to tackle the ongoing and increasing housing needs of families in Hillsborough County through a significant financial commitment. And I ask you, why should we do it? The reason we should do it is because God said we should do it. He said that we have a responsibility to help the needy. And for that reason, and you know, also, the scripture says, "Don't glean the field." We cannot use those biblical experiences as far as products being produced by land and all those things today. What we have to look at is what's current. How do we pay for resources with cash money? You all have a budget of over $5 billion. Therefore, with a $5 billion budget, certainly, there should be a little applied to those disadvantaged citizens of Hillsborough County. So why should we do it? We should do it because it is the right thing to do. The last time I spoke to you, I said, one of our Sunday School lessons said, the importance of following directions. We can never go wrong doing what God said. What I didn't share with you, it was after Jesus's ascension. He told the disciples that had fished all night long and caught nothing. He said, "Casting net on the right side of the boat." And after they did that, they cast so many fish that they didn't even think that they could pull it in. We can't go wrong doing God's will. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public comment. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, Mr. Merrill will now move into the agenda.
Yes, Commissioners. Your first time certant is your public hearing, D1.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I am Connie Cassini with the Public Utilities Department. This morning, we're having a public hearing to approve our final assessment resolution and our assessment role to create a water and wastewater impact fee assessment unit 18201. This action will allow the property owners to pay impact fees over a 20-year period. We estimate that the collection of those impact fees will be $17,253,416 over that 20-year period. The annual collections become a part of our budget for the Water Enterprise Fund. This is a public hearing.
Great. Thank you very much for your explanation. I see no questions. We'll move into open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Anyone to speak in opposition to item D1? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Board action? Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris to approve item D1. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you.
And your next item is your 1015 time certant, F2, which is Commissioner Miller's item. Board members, I like to suggest that maybe when we're finished with F2, we take F3, since they're both
I agree.
related. But
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, you're up.
Okay, with you, Commissioner Miller. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that people understand that my item, F2 and F3, are two separate items. They may follow each other, but they're completely separate items. In 1989, and Mr. White already alluded to this, Dr. Dolphus Eliot, a curator of the Barnett-Aiden Collection of Black Art, sold that collection to the Florida Education, Florida Endowment Fund for Higher Education. The CEO of that Florida Endowment Fund of Higher Education at that time was one of my friends, the late Dr. Ike Tribble. And he was the one that basically started and worked on creating the Tampa African-American Museum that was established in 1991, and is set in downtown Tampa on Florida Avenue, just north, north of Scott Street. And it was a jewel in our community. It housed much, much beautiful art from all over the world. It had a shop in there, and there was a lot of, many, many functions held at that African-American museum at that particular point in time. In 1996, unfortunately, we lost that museum. It closed its doors, and soon after that, Dr. Ike Tribble contracted cancer and passed away not shortly after that. And we lost a museum, a jewel in our community. So my thought process since that particular point in time was to see what we could do to create another African-American museum in Hillsborough County in Tampa. In the legislature, I thought about it, but just wasn't the perfect timing for it. When I came on the county commission, we were in a recession and did not want to talk about how we could do something at that particular point in time. Sitting down with staff and working out what we possibly could do to achieve another African-American museum in Hillsborough County, thus, we have this information today that I'm going to make a motion to do. This is something that's vital and important. I think it teaches a rich history, what happens in Hillsborough County, and this world of what art is all about. I'm not an artist. My handwriting is one of the worst I've ever seen myself. But my granddaughter is an artist. She is a photographer, and she does art. And I never knew this, as she was that great, until I walked into her room one day and saw the art that she had put forth, and it really, really blew my mind. And one of the things that also I've been working with is a gentleman by the name of Patrick Mitchell. Patrick Mitchell and I grew up together. He was an artist, he is an artist, and he worked for the Tampa Tribune. So if you saw some of that art back in the day, that was done by Patrick Mitchell. And he's very much instrumental in wanting to work and help out how we can get this museum off the ground. So having said that, my motion is to, in order to provide a community showcase to recognize and celebrate the past, present, and future contributions of African-American artists, I would like to direct staff to bring to the board in 30 days recommendations for the establishment of the African-American Art Museum, including, one, a site owned by the county or the city of Tampa or owned by a private benefactor; two, a timeline and process for preliminary planning for the museum, including a plan for community input, encouragement of private philanthropy investments; two, I'm sorry, three, fiscal year 18 funding for preliminary planning; and four, the use of grant funding provided by, approved by the board in the fiscal year 2009, fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19 budget, and the following programs to be looked at. And that's the Historical Challenge Grant, Cultural Assets, Seminole Gaming PAC, and the Arts Council. That's my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And we do have a Commissioner comment, but I really applaud you for doing this, because I can't tell you how many times I've driven down Florida Avenue going by the site where it used to be. I remember when it opened. I knew Ike Tribble very well. Actually, his daughter, Ayesha, and my daughter were very good friends at the Academy of the Holy Names. They were in the same class together. And I just, I missed it. I missed it when it closed. So I applaud you for doing this. Thank you. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I also applaud Commissioner Miller's efforts here. This is something that is long overdue, that's been very special to me. There are several in this room that are aware that I have been collecting African art for well over 40 years and have probably one of the, if not the, most extensive African art collection anywhere in this county. And I'd like to call the deputy county administrator up here, Greg Horwiddell. Have you seen my collection?
Yes, Commissioner, it is quite extensive.
Okay.
Is it the one in your office?
Oh, I have just pieces in my office, but I've got art that's 300 years old, and I have been collecting for a very long time. So I have a personal vested interest in this as well. I am an artist and appreciate art of all artifacts, and I look forward to working with you. To that end, I had a conversation with the state senator that represents most of the art museums and art centers in both Hillsborough and Pinellas County, and he sent me a letter he wanted me to read into the record regarding both this item and Commissioner Miller's item that is relevant.
I mean, is this primarily for your item?
No, no, no. It's both. But it's important to know that he has been working closely with all of the art museums in both counties. He's brought home the largest state dollars for the Carter C. Woodson African-American Art Museum in Pinellas, and he stands ready to do everything in his power to help in this initiative, you know, both in garnishing assets and dollars as well as knowledge and support. To put it in simple words, at the end of his letter, "I just want you to know that I am very motivated to be a part of this as the state partner in helping to tell the story of Tampa and Hillsborough County. I will work diligently to bring state resources like I've done in other situations and would like to be a part of the planning phase of this project as a partner." I have had a brief conversation with both Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Chris, and thanked them both for their efforts and their leadership in this endeavor. I had promised him that I would
Who is it from?
Make those comments.
You didn't mention who it was from.
It's from State Senator Darrell Rouson,
Okay.
who represents both Pinellas and Hillsborough. Something like this is critical, but can't be done without a groundswell of base support. It's going to take building an organization, a public-private partnership to do it. It's going to take public and private dollars to make it happen. It's going to take developing programs in advance that could swiftly move into the facility to sustain it. And most of all, it's going to take an effort, permanent effort in place, that can operate and sustain the facility once it's built. I know this from my experiences with the University Community Center and starting the University Area Community Development Corporation. You know, it took time, but it took sweat equity to make this work and to make it sustainable. And we have the potential here to have something very special and one of the few in the entire country and could add tremendous value to visit Tampa Bay and to educating our children on all of the partners culturally that have participated in developing our great society of today. So I commend you, Commissioner Miller, for your outstanding leadership and look forward to helping you at whatever capacity I can.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Commissioner Chris, I appreciate your comments. However, Senator Rouson has never contacted me. I don't, I would appreciate him talking to me directly about what he's willing to do in Tallahassee concerning whatever funds he could bring forth to establish African-American museum. He wrote you a letter, and I have not received anything from Commissioner, from Senator Rouson. So if he is listening or you get a message back to him telling him I'm willing to sit down and talk with him, but I did not receive anything from him. As you can see in my motion, I'm asking staff to turn over every rock they possibly can to make this happen. I was involved with the African-American museum back in the 1990s. As a matter of fact, there was a steering committee I served on until I was elected to the legislature. Then I resigned at that particular point in time, because it probably would have been a conflict of interest that I was told. So I'm willing to do whatever I can in working with whomever, including Senator Rouson, to maybe secure funds from the state to help us out in this area. But as you can see, I've also asked staff to turn over every possible rock with either city government, philanthropists, whomever may own buildings, whatever the case may be, to make this happen.
Very good. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just would like, thank you. I'd just like to thank Commissioner Miller for bringing this forward. I, too, remember the African-American Art Museum that was here in Tampa and enjoyed it greatly and never quite, I can't remember or understood, I don't know if I knew at the time, what led to it disappearing from our community, but it's an, it was an important and wonderful asset, and I'd love to see something back again. So I thank you very much for bringing that forward, and I look forward to us moving on this project.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris on item F2. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Item F3?
Thank you. We'll now move to F3. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is something I've been working with staff and the community on for over two years. And it's, I put it on hold for six months, you know, after all the controversy that took place with the Civil War monument stuff. But now with that past us, I've begun working on it again. In order to get some funding to move it forward, I was told by staff that I really needed to bring it to the agenda sooner than later so that we could consider funding a consultant to work to help cultivate this in the next fiscal budget. Commissioner Miller's project and this, while they are different, they are related. And the reason why is, in order to do what he wants to do, there's got to be a machine in place to make it happen. And what I'm proposing today is putting together the machine that will bring to life what Commissioner Miller wants to do and much more. And a machine that will live on beyond our years and our children's years, but will perpetuate and sustain black culture in Hillsborough County and make it very much a part of who we are today as it really is, make it much more visible. To that end, what I am asking the county staff to do, and I'm making a motion to do, is to create one, a council that would lead the way in identifying past, present, and potentially future history, cultural activities, places, and people, to form a advisory board that would be made up of people from the community with the roots and the knowledge and the experience to be able to properly advise that council, to come together and form a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit foundation to be able to receive private and public dollars and to begin a fundraising initiative to do so. as I've learned in the past with the multiple projects that I've been a part of that have been successful. This is the way to get it done. In order to build and cultivate a sustainable initiative to identify historical and cultural places, people, and activities that highlight Black history and our diverse Black culture throughout Hillsborough County and our cities, we direct staff to bring to the Board of County Commissioners within 30 days a proposal to create the Black Heritage and Cultural Council Initiative of Hillsborough County that will identify, protect, and preserve Black history and the role it has played in enriching our community, that will build and expand Black cultural engagement and awareness, that will grow and add venues, that will support Black tourism, that will attract new residents, businesses, and employment opportunities, that will generate greater private support for Black heritage and cultural activity throughout, through the possible creation of a Black Heritage and Cultural Initiative Foundation, a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Crist. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second by Commissioner Hagan. Are there any questions? Seeing Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Has the county done this? Can we set up a 501(c)(3) if I'm understanding the motion?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I changed seats and I forgot to turn on my mic as well.
I hit the wrong button. We will certainly include that research. There are some models where that could be done. We'd have to be careful to make sure there's the proper public purpose and so forth. But there are definitely models where communities have done similar things.
Okay. And what about funding?
And just to add to that, we've assisted others like the Friends of the Park and other organizations to help them set up 501(c)(3). So, I mean, we haven't done it directly, but we've assisted.
And what we're doing right now is just coming back with a report as to how this is viable?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Chris, do you want to respond?
Again, at this level, we're asking county to come back with a recommendation on how this could be done, how it could be funded. And, you know, at that point, we would hear from those who would be stakeholders on, you know, what their feelings are. I can tell you that Santiago over at Visit Tampa Bay is super excited about this because there's nothing else like it in the country. And it would be, open up an entire new market segment for him to go after, to bring new visitors here. I know the Arts Council Executive Director is excited, and she said in her words, "In all my years and all my experience, and I've been in other markets from Atlanta to Austin to Miami and back, and I've never seen anything like this, and this would be super incredible, and they would want to be a part of it." So, you know, today, we're just asking staff to bring back a proposed recommendation. We'll hear from the stakeholders later.
Good.
Yes, please.
And it doesn't impede the motion we just acted on?
No, not in any way, shape, or form.
All right.
I just, I have a couple of questions for clarification. So you want to create the council, but then you mentioned advisory board. So is the council and advisory board, is that going to be their function? And who will they be advising?
No, the council will be probably a 13-member organization with a specified membership of individuals that bring capacity to the table, so they're not just, you know, people there that don't know what they're doing. But they're going to need brain power. They're going to need brains to tap. They're going to need people from the community that have the experience and the knowledge. So that council will identify 25 individuals from the community and appoint them to an advisory board that they'll tap into as more or less a treasure chest of historical information.
Okay. I'm going to be very interested to see what staff brings back. I'm kind of unclear on exactly what this council will do, but I think as it keeps moving down the road, we'll get more clear on what the actual agenda. I mean, it does say here some different things, but we do have Black Heritage Festival already. We have, I guess, maybe I would like to suggest to you, Commissioner Chris, is that we kind of also identify or maybe do an assessment of what's already in the community. So maybe you can kind of pull it all together, you know, under this umbrella. And so we don't have a lot of different things going on out there. I've formed many 501(c)(3)'s. Some have made it, some have not. And, you know, you've got to have very clear vision on what you're doing moving forward. So that's my only suggestion is just to do an assessment, see what all is out there, and then come back, try to pull it all together under your umbrella. Commissioner Kemp, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kemp was next. You're recognized.
Thank you. I think it would be a wonderful idea to have a trail, a cultural trail, to have, to highlight assets that we already have, including the Oakland Cemetery that has some incredible stories to be told there. And different, to have this also as an addition in our community. But as you have, as has been stated here, others and I have concerns about what already exists as assets and programs in our community, and I'm not sure how this would intersect. And I think we have to include that, as you suggested, and build on the strengths we have, build on, if we, as we move forward, hopefully, with this African American Museum, that, you know, that could, I see where these two projects could lead to a single, a single kind of initiative. But I think, you know, we have to be careful that it is inclusive of what we have now and what we want to do moving forward.
Right. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to get down in the weeds, but I think at this point, I'm hearing a lot of concerns. So I'm going to go ahead and get a little deeper into this and give you the mission and the deliverables. The mission is to build and cultivate sustainable initiative, that means initiative that will last, to identify historical, cultural places. Right now, we don't have anything doing that. And Commissioner Kemp, this, their purpose will be to identify those places that you just said you'd like to protect and preserve. People, activities, and that includes, Commissioner Merman, the things that you mentioned as well. That would be the purpose of the board, is to identify all of that. And if it exists, great, what can we do to support it? If it doesn't exist, what can we do to recreate something that can showcase what once was and why it was important? And to highlight Black history and the diverse Black culture throughout our county. There are a number of different segments of the Black community that come from different parts of the world that have different cultures and foods and music and dance and clothing and whatnot, and they all celebrate at different times. And it would be great to be able to bring them all together and showcase it. Deliverables, okay. The council, I'll read through a short list of deliverables here. I won't get down into the deep deliverables. Establish and cultivate an advisory board for the foundation to access knowledge of history and activity, to establish reasonable goals and objectives and timelines for their deliverables, to establish a Black history exhibit to be permanently housed in a place of relevance. That could be the History Center, or that could be the new facility that Commissioner Miller is talking about. I mean, we build a museum, and then we've got nothing to put in it. So let's start cultivating what we're going to put in it in advance so we can build the space to suit. Cultivate a small traveling exhibit that could be displayed for 30 days, 12 months out of the year in different locations, like schools and libraries and county centers and city halls. Establish a Black Heritage Walk that I call Steppin' in Time, because it's a, I'm a former professional dancer, and that was a dance term that I heard for many years from my friends that I thought would be a creative way to accent what other communities call Steps in Time. Identify at least 25 or more historical sites that could be part of this throughout our county and our cities to help tourists go out into our beautiful place and to see what we have to offer. To identify needs and resources in order to grow and sustain and permanently put in place this program so that it lives on. Build and cultivate a sustainable initiative to continue this mission. Build and cultivate support and engagement from private sector contributors who are out there. When I spoke to the History Museum, I asked them what percentage of their donors were Black. He said, "Very, very, 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 very small." I asked him why. He said he didn't know. I asked if they had any plans to cultivate that. He said, "No, not in the immediate future." I have done a lot of fundraising. I know that if people can see the value and feel a vested interest, they will contribute. And there is a total untapped market out there that I think has rich, deep pockets that could come to the table and be supportive of this and other cultural activities in our community. Look into the possibilities of either reclaiming or replicating the old Jackson House and building a real, usable, by today's standards and codes boutique hotel that includes a specialty restaurant, a specialty gift shop, and an old speakeasy bar. Something where visitors could come and stay close to the Riverwalk that looks like, feels like, and has the genre of the Jackson House, but is by today's contemporary standards that can accommodate the handicapped and can meet the needs of the business traveler. The revenues generated from that in itself could be a sustaining mechanism for this effort. Look into the possibilities of building and operating a Black cultural center, someplace close to the Black Historical Downtown District, which kind of is similar to what Commissioner Miller is proposing, and that's how it could fit right in here. And the list goes on. We also challenge them to create the 501(c)(3) Foundation because they've got to be able to raise money. The council we create can't raise money, and that's why a third-party, arms-length nonprofit has to be created. That money could be managed by the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay very easily. And finally, to create the advisory board. And I go into the details on what the deliverables are for the advisory board, and I go into details on what the deliveries are for the foundation, right down to the pennies that they need to generate and by what period of time. So this is a well-thought-out plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chris has outlined a lot there. I don't know exactly, really, where he's going with this, but I would be ever mindful to understand that there are a number of Black events that are in Hillsborough County. One large would be the Black Heritage Festival that's put on every, I think, January. And there are other things that we normally have in Hillsborough County that I think that we need to look at what we're doing and not duplicate. I don't know exactly where the 501(c)(3) will be going, but I guess we'll find out if this comes back. Concerning the library, concerning the museum, Commissioner Chris, be ever mindful that if we get a museum, there will be art in there. Mr. Mitchell, stand up, please. Patrick Mitchell? Remember I told you, Mr. Patrick Mitchell? This is Mr. Patrick Mitchell. I've known him all of my life. We grew up in the same neighborhood. He's an artist. And he demonstrates his art and other art throughout this county, probably throughout this country, of what he and others have done. So I'm quite sure that we get this in place, Mr. Mitchell will be heavily involved in what we can get in the library. So be ever mindful, there will be art in the library. I wouldn't be trying to bring this forth if we didn't know if there was going to be art. I've talked to Mr. Mitchell and others about it, and we will have art in the library.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
And again, I don't doubt that. I know Mr. Mitchell. I served with him on the Arts Council. He and I first met on this issue over a year ago and talked about it in great length, and he showed a great interest in wanting to serve on this council. In addition, I had lunch with him just last week where we further discussed it and, you know, we're moving forward in a direction to bring this to life. And, you know, again, this is not meant to step on toes. I met with Sam Wright, who is at the forefront as the leader, has been a leader in the Black Heritage Festival every year. I have hosted the Black Heritage Festival at the University Community Center for many years. I am aware of all of that. The foundation would raise money and grant it out to organizations and activities just like that. The Black Heritage Festival every year needs money. Wouldn't it be nice to have a deeper pocket that they could draw upon to grow and sustain that program and that activity? I know that Mr. Mitchell wants to jumpstart a specialized arts program for youth here in the county. Wouldn't it be nice to have a deep pocket whose purpose is raising the money to grow and sustain an initiative like what you want to do? That's what this is all about. It's about creating the machine to get it done. It's not about shutting anything down or stepping on any toes. It's about providing you support. Commissioner Miller, I'm giving you the support that is needed to get it done.
Okay. Thank you all very much. It's a great idea, two great ideas, and we'll be able to really capitalize on them, bring something special to the African American community. We have a motion by Commissioner Crist, seconded by Commissioner Hagan on item F3. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. Mr. Merrill, on with the agenda.
That concludes your time certens, and just a couple of regular items, beginning with B1.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gene Erle. I'm in the Department of Healthcare Services. B1 asks you to approve the 10th Modification Agreement with St. Joseph's Community Care, Inc., 10th Modification Agreement with Florida Health Sciences Centers, known as Tappa General Hospital, the 13th Modification Agreement with Suncoast Community Health Centers, and the 14th Modification Agreement with Tampa Family Health Centers, Inc. It's for the provision of specialty care services for our Hillsborough County healthcare plan, and it extends the agreements for a two-year period commencing July 1, 2018, and it would be unilaterally renewed by the county through its Director of Healthcare Services Department for three successive year periods thereunder. Updates the maintenance and access to records clause, and it adds access to records clause per the statute to each of the agreements. And then finally, it updates the equal opportunity, non-discrimination clause per the BOCC for the 13th Modification Agreement with Suncoast and the 14th Modification Agreement with Tampa Family Health Centers. Funding for this is with the Indigent Fund, and it's included in our FY 2018 budget, and no additional county adverberum. Funds are required.
Okay. Thank you, Gene. We are on item B1. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
I have a question.
Push your button. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thanks, Gene. Item B2?
Commissioner Chris has a question.
Yes, sir.
Gene, Senior Services, you've got connections. Can you find out what's going on with Ed Talu? We've been missing him for a while here.
Actually, I would ask some of the people in the homeless services.
He's not homeless.
Yeah, I think he's with relatives. But I think some of our staff, Antoinette Triplet and Felicia Crosby-Rucker, I think they have kept tabs on him because they had told me he had gone to be with relatives, though I just don't know that for sure. But they know he has relatives up north.
If you could find out and let me know.
Yes, sir. I'll refer that to Carl Harness, since he's in charge of the homeless services, and he's here. So I'll make sure of that, okay?
Right. Thank you, Gene. Thanks for all
If you could find out and let me know.
Yes, sir. I'll refer that to Carl Harness, since he's in charge of the
Yeah, Carl.
Library Services and he's here, so.
Right.
I'll make sure of that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Thanks for all your good work with the Indigent Healthcare Plan.
Yes, thank you.
Item B2. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Merman.
B2.
Let's try and keep things moving along here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Bradenwald, Director of Library Services. This morning, we're asking that you approve the acceptance of State of Florida State Aid to Library Grant Funds for $1,37,289 to assist in library operations, and to realign these funds within the fiscal '17-'18 grant to bring the budget in line with the grant award and better track expenditures. The budget amendment decreases the fiscal year '18 budget by $13,561 from the initial estimate to the appropriated amount of $1,37,289. No additional county funds are required for this.
Motion by Commissioner Miller on item B2, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Great job. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thanks, Andrew. Item F1, board appointments.
Choose one, Commissioner Merman.
Catherine O'Donnely.
Commissioner Chris.
Same, Catherine O'Donnely.
Commissioner Miller.
Number one.
Commissioner Hagan.
O'Donnely.
Commissioner Kemp.
Number one.
Commissioner Hagan-Bethan.
O'Donnely.
Catherine O'Donnely. Your next board is your Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. Please choose one, Commissioner Merman.
Number three, Annabelle Beg.
Commissioner Chris.
Number one, Wanda Dumore.
Commissioner Miller.
Number four, Charlie Riggins.
Commissioner Hagan.
Beg.
Commissioner Kemp.
Number one.
Commissioner Hagan-Bethan.
Beg.
We need four votes, so we could take the top two and revote.
I'll move to Beg. Keep it simple.
Okay, so it'll be Annabelle Beg. Your next board is your Childcare Facilities Advisory Board. Please choose one, Commissioner Merman.
Thank you. Carrie Elwell.
Number six.
Commissioner Chris.
Number six.
Commissioner Miller.
Five.
Commissioner Hagan.
Number five.
Commissioner Kemp.
Number five.
Commissioner Hagan-Bethan.
Five.
It will be Naria Cormier. Your next board is your Code Enforcement. Please choose one, Commissioner Merman.
Richard Baumann, number seven.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. He was automatically appointed to the Land Use Appeals Board.
If he's not appointed to the code board, he will.
Okay, then I'm going to go with number eight, Sharon Clayton.
Okay. Commissioner Chris.
Sharon Clayton.
Commissioner Miller.
Clayton.
Commissioner Hagan.
Clayton.
Commissioner Kemp.
Clayton.
Commissioner Hagan-Bethan.
Clayton.
Sharon Clayton. So your next board, Richard Baumann will be the full-term appointment to the Land Use Appeals Board, and Cody Powell will be the partial term for the Land Use Appeals Board. And the Public Library Board, there's three positions, one for each district. There was one applicant for District One. Margarita Coleman will be reappointed. She was a current member. Felicia Picora is a current member for District Three. She will be reappointed. And then please choose one for District Four. Commissioner Merman.
Thank you. And I noticed the notes here that she, that number 12, who I know, has had some medical issues and has kept her from attending meetings. I noticed we didn't get any attendance on these individuals, but do you know anything further beyond that?
She's missed seven out of 12 meetings. That's, in her application, it did say that there is no reason for her to, that she knew of, that she would miss a meeting. So maybe going forward, it's been addressed.
Okay. I guess I'm looking at Andrew, if he could come forward. I mean, we've been stressing attendance here, and, you know, we just need to make sure. Is she unable to attend the meetings?
While being mindful of her medical privacy, Christine has had an ongoing medical issue that has excused her from meetings. It has been, I think the attendance record stands, that's pretty much, I think, what I'm comfortable with.
So going forward, will she be able to attend meetings?
I'm going to have to go with what's written in the application.
Which is?
She said that there was no reason for her to miss.
Okay. Okay, then I'll go with number 12.
Commissioner Chris.
Oh, Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry. You're recognized.
I just wanted to say that my notes have medically excused for six out of 12 meetings.
I'll go with number 12.
Commissioner Miller.
Number one.
Commissioner Hagan.
Same.
Commissioner Kemp.
12.
Commissioner Hagan-Bethan.
12.
It would be Christine Kazor.
A motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Your last regular item is G1, Head Start Report.
Hello, Commissioners. Dr. Jenkins, Head Start, early Head Start Department. It continues to go well. Thank you so much for your support. We are preparing for our volunteer banquet and end-of-year children's activities. If I can answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Miller to accept the report, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carried, six to zero.
That just leaves any future issues.
Okay. All right, any future issues? Commissioner Kemp?
I have one.
That's okay, you're recognized.
I have several future items, thank you very much. I'm not certain as to the other Commissioners, but I have heard from several South and East Hillsborough County residents about a meeting that occurred on May 3 at Riverview High School concerning the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1721 and the related development, Land Development Code Amendment 180370. These are the controversial RP2 changes that we have all heard about. I would also let you know from my assessment that social media is very much exploding with assessments and information about this meeting as well. This meeting is advertised on the county's website as a public meeting. However, the meeting was run by developers' representatives. No county staff were on hand to answer questions. County's digital media staff were present to assist. A YouTube video with the Hillsborough County seal displayed is available online. I would advise all the Commissioners to watch that. Notices sent to residents by mail call this a quote-unquote "public" meeting, but the notices direct those seeking more information to call the developer's law firm, which I find is inappropriate. The developer's PR firm took down the names of more than, and I've heard estimates of anywhere from two to three to 500 people that attended that meeting, residents who attended. I asked for a copy of the sign-in sheet from our staff over a week ago, but as of yesterday, was told that county staff had not yet received a copy. We finally just got a copy of it this morning. I additionally also like copies of the public comment sheets that were directed to be given to the developers. David Smith's address was at the bottom, and they were collected, and with a notice at the bottom saying anything that has Hillsborough County, you should know is a public record, but didn't come to us. And I have no idea, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't know about that if a citizen hadn't given it to me. Here we are allowing a developer who's pushing a very controversial proposal to control this process. This will inhibit robust questions and honest answers. Residents may believe that they have heard by the, from the county or with the county. Instead, residents are having a side conversation with developers. The developers are pushing their own agenda and have no obligation to do what's best for residents or taxpayers. I've inquired of county staff why we're allowing this to happen. The answer I was given is that this board, approved by a vote of four to one, and I was the only one, this process, I was the only one who voted no on that. Looking back at the agenda item, the proposed process was not made clear to this board. The agenda item references actions by the applicant, but also refers to the participation of quote-unquote "interested parties" in public outreach. I would, for one, assume that the county and the planning commission would be interested parties in a proposal to put down 14,400 homes in a rural area. I am an interested party, and I, as one, I do intend to attend the July 12 meeting scheduled at Riverview High School, and I want a seat up front. I hope to see other Commissioners there. County staff and the planning commission should be there with me to hear from residents and respond. Staff should be there to collect the names and input of residents who attend. I believe that developers should take a seat in the audience, listen, and respond when input is needed. I'm going to put forward proposed changes to this process as a Commissioners' item on the next agenda, so I'd just like to let those present know where I intend to go with this. Secondly, I was just looking at our application fees for land use, and I wondered what, how they look compared to other counties. And I tell you, I was going through the other counties. Pasco County, right now, we're charging $1,000 for under 500 acres for a land application. Pasco, and $3,000 for over it. So this, this application was a $3,000 application. Pasco County, people can go 10 miles up the road if they were trying to do this same amendment. In Pasco County, according to their records right here, I calculated out that it would cost $32,500 for this land use application to go forward. In Pasco County, 10 miles up the road, here, we're charging $3,000. I looked at Manatee County. They have a base of $20,000 that they charge for over 10 acres. We cut ours off at 500 acres. So over 10 acres there, they charge $20,000 as a base. They charge $1,000 per public hearing, plus numerous other charges that they have for their application. Again, we charge $3,000 for over 500 acres. They have a 10-acre cutoff here, but they charge $20,000, $1,000 per a public hearing, plus other fees. I looked at, this one is Broward County, I think, let's see, Palm Beach County. They have a base fee of $16,000, and they add many additional fees on top of it, including a per acreage fee that I wasn't able to get. Broward County, again, $17,625. In addition, if it has traffic issues that they have to deal with, another $6,000, $5,828. I do not understand why these other counties are charging $30,000 to $35,000 for the same application that we are doing for $1,000 or $3,000.
So are you going to ask staff to do something?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to outline this.
I just wanted to make sure we were getting.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood what I'm seeing here.
I didn't interrupt you, but I just wanted to make sure.
I like to direct staff to prepare a report comparing Hillsborough County's land use fees or fee schedule to land use applications using Pasco, Manatee, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties' fee schedules, and see if we can get a comparison and get a little educated on how this is moving forward.
Do you want that to come back at like a land use meeting? It might be more appropriate.
Well, we can have it come back at a land use meeting.
So we'll ask Adam and his staff to put that together.
Thank you.
Good.
And I have a third item.
Okay.
And since we won't be having budget workshops this month, but I'm, I'll request that staff prepare a report that reviews the countywide general funds, countywide general funds of the seven largest counties in Florida, excluding Pinellas County, since they kind of have a different place, and Pasco, Polk, and Manatee Counties, our surrounding counties, to determine how much of their countywide revenue and population, comparing population and countywide revenue is dedicated to transit.
Okay. Have you got all that?
Keeping them busy.
Thank you. I just have a really quick ask, and I know Gerald White brought it up, but I would like to ask, when the county attorney's office brings back the language on June 20, the nine single-member proposal, that they bring back language that could create eight single-member districts with the countywide elected chair for comparison purposes only. And discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further business before the board? Seeing none, more adjourned.